Okay, we're officially open at 6:08 PM. The Golden City Council meeting, and we're gonna start with the pledge of allegiance. Do you want to start your greeting?
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll do roll call.
Chip Bradley, position two.
Sergio Martinez, position four. Three, so sorry.
B. Phoebe Skinner, position five. Four, now you got four.
Anthony Beer, position five.
Okay, we have Staff Members Administrator Fritz and Deputy Administrator Pagano, and I'm Mayor Tammy Kaufman. All right. Thank you very much. Counselor Madison got detained and is unable to make it. And the Gold Beach Main Street outreach coordinator wasn't able to make it for our issues, and that gets us right to Beacon Broadband way earlier than I told you.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and the City Council for listening to Beacon for a few minutes of what we're gonna be doing. So about eighty-three years ago, Gold Beach did not have electricity about eighty-three years ago, and members stepped up to create a cooperative that built electricity. And now here we are eighty-three years later, and Coos-Curry Electric is stepping up again to build broadband out to all of Coos and Curry County to be able to provide high-speed internet in these areas. So why did they do this? It's not just about high-speed internet. It's also about the electricity itself. We have to make the grid smarter. We have to be able to reduce outages, which will allow us having fiber to reduce outages by up to forty percent. So we'll be able to know when outages occur before they even occur. We also have tons of substations. Those substations need to communicate with each other, so we'll be able to communicate within the substations. We're also gonna be able to know about early power detection. If there's gonna be outages, we know in advance before because we have a grid that's much smarter. The fiber is being used initially, and for one of the main reasons, to make a better grid, to make it smart grid, which allows us, in fact, to make Gold Beach a smart city because it will have a smart grid that surrounds it all. That was one of the major reasons. Number two is education. When we talk about education, I've met with, I just got through a big meeting with superintendent schools in Brookings, and one of the key things we're finding out is a lot of your students and your teachers live outside of Gold Beach. Now, we understand that Gold Beach has a pretty good internet company. I mean, we applaud the fact that Zipley's come in here and done some great jobs, and there's nothing wrong with competition. We applaud competition, which is gonna create lower rates for all of you because it's gonna have to remain competitive, and there's not many towns in America that might have two fiber companies to just a thousand homes. So we think it's huge. But also, when you look at the education, the kids that live outside of Gold Beach, they aren't, a lot of them can't even do their homework. They can't Skype. They can't do a lot of things that they can do, and the teachers also live out in those areas. So we are gonna build out all the areas where everybody else stopped. So Zipley stopped at the county, at the city line of Gold Beach, but they didn't build any of the surrounding areas outside of that. We're gonna build all of Coos and Curry County. We're gonna build fourteen thousand homes, and then six thousand homes outside of those areas. So we think that it's gonna be a huge deal for economic development, for telehealth, and for all the reasons that broadband is key for these areas. So we're gonna offer three major packages. We're gonna offer a gig service, five hundred megabit, and two gig, which is gonna be symmetrical, which means you get the exact same speed coming up and coming down inside your home. We're also gonna offer a streaming video package. We're also gonna offer white phone service, and we'll offer security for the home, so you can have security cameras anywhere you want in this building, outside of the building. That'll all be provided by Beacon Broadband through Coos-Curry Electric. So we think it's gonna be a huge event. Now, you say, I know I only have five minutes, so I'm almost finishing up here. So the key is, once it comes, that's always a big question is. So right now, we're finishing up Brookings. We're finishing up the harbor. We just turned out a thousand homes on both sides of the Chaco River. We're heading from our offices in Brookings all the way to the California border, from the ocean all the way up to that side. Then we're heading back up into this direction, and our estimates is we should be, after we get through with Brookings-Pistol River, then we'll go into South Gold Beach, and then we'll do all of Gold Beach at the same time, and then we head north. We anticipate construction starting around September, October of this year. We anticipate turning on the fiber, probably in the first quarter, and making sure it's working, and then probably by March, April, May, we should activate most of Gold Beach, and we'll then start moving our way north and that. So we have great services. We are very local. Nobody else is as local as we are. We have an up-scar street. We will have people working in there. We have representatives tonight here from Coos-Curry Electric Cooperative. Keith, yeah, Keith runs their member services. So we are partnered at the hip with Coos-Curry Electric. We're using their infrastructure. We're using their lines. We're using, not their lines specifically, but their infrastructure, their poles, and their right-of-ways and such. So we think it's a very positive movement for Gold Beach to have high-speed fiber internet. You know, we were coming this way anyway. Zipley kinda came in, and they did, as we were talking about it, and they did do it. But as I mentioned before, nobody's gonna go outside of Gold Beach. They're not gonna go with it. You have a hundred, you have five hundred homes per mile. There's two miles in Gold Beach. You have a thousand homes. You have five hundred homes per mile. Makes it very profitable to do that. Step outside, if you go to the rural areas, you have ten homes per mile. Nobody builds that. We're gonna build that, make sure everybody has equitable, and that's the digital divide. That's the ability to go outside of Gold Beach and up all those roads that nobody would ever build fiber up. We're gonna go build those, and that's gonna help Gold Beach in the long run because it's gonna help the people that work and live here, that go out there, and they can work from there. So we're very proud that we're gonna do this. We're negotiating with him right now on how much it's gonna cost for us to do that. Our services are very easy. Fifty-five dollars a month is what we charge for five hundred megabits. We have no games, no contracts. There's no six months at this price, one year. Other companies, they come in, they go, here it is for one year, and they jack it up forty percent. We're not gonna do that. There's no prices. We're gonna raise those prices at a later date. So we think, right now, we do have some people that aren't particularly happy with us doing this, but we know it's one-tenth of one percent. So we also know that about eight to ten thousand people are gonna sign up for our service out of the approximately sixteen thousand. We're getting such a demand right now. We're backed up over thirty days on installations. So when you look at it, there's only approximately ten to twenty or thirty people that don't want us doing it, but there are approximately ten thousand people that want us to do it, and they can't wait for it. And I've been sending the mayor testimonials from people around Gold Beach. They can't wait for it. They cannot wait for our service, and what a lot of people only hear are the people that don't want our service, but they don't get to hear the ones, the thousands and thousands of people that wanna sign up for our service and are gonna enjoy fiber, high-speed, and I'm willing to take any questions that you may have.
Okay, questions start with Counselor Skinner.
Always full of questions. Thank you. Thank you for giving us updates today. I know I've had a lot of people ask me about it. My husband runs a library here, and they got fiber in early when they're building that new piece, and he's, yeah, it's a huge, huge thing. And I taught for, I taught during the pandemic here in Florida.
Sure, you understand.
We got to deal with all the hotspots and things not working, up sixes and the elk and all of that, so very excited. Thank you.
Yeah, one of the other things I'm going to be offered here, I just built fiber for a high-speed internet cooperative in Pennsylvania. So I just came here about a year ago. The CEO asked me to come out here with my experience of building this out. One of the things I did, and I see a demand for out here, is I created the senior-to-senior program, and I'm gonna do that here in Gold Beach. And what that means is I'm gonna utilize the education community, and we're gonna have seniors in high school teach the senior citizens how to use computers, and we'll get the banks to pay for computers and use the senior center to do that. So I had over a hundred graduates almost every three or four months in Pennsylvania. Graduate, I won the number-one FCC award for this program. We're gonna launch what's called the Coos-Curry Connected Senior Program, and I've already got some of the educators in the county commissioners are involved in it, and the mayor of Brookings is involved, and I'm gonna come see you and hope you get involved in it. It's for free for seniors. It's a six-week program. We teach seniors how to use computers, but they're matched up with a senior in high school that teaches them how to do that, and we have the curriculum. And at the end, they get a certificate, a completion. They can Zoom, they can Skype, they can do email, they can do online banking. They're gonna be able to do that. And then we're also looking to provide, I know you're looking to upgrade your downtown area, I wanna come in and talk to you about a Wi-Fi network, the Coos-Curry Beacon Broadband will provide maybe a Wi-Fi network for all the downtown, as you're getting your utilities underground. I know you're talking to Coos-Curry Electric. Let us help be a part of that community. When we come in here, our offices are here. We wanna be a part of it. When people come out of their homes, they have our services, and they wanna go to the parks, and they wanna do something, log onto our internet, and you're gonna have complete Wi-Fi, and we'll light up all of Gold Beach.
Anything else, Counselor Skinner?
Are you guys going to be assisting? I remember before you were talking about an assistance program for people who aren't able to make the fifty-five dollars a month payment, or was that a thought?
That's correct. Good question. We are gonna offer the Affordable Connectivity Program. The Affordable Connectivity Program gives somebody thirty dollars. We actually offer a package that will be one hundred megabits per second. That's thirty dollars. They will get it for free if they qualify. So they get a free hookup, no contracts, free service if they qualify for the Connectivity Program. So we think it's a great program. If they wanna upgrade for twenty-five bucks, they get five hundred megabits, and they'll be able to do it. So the answer is yes, we will be one hundred percent behind that.
Counselor Beer?
I don't have any questions. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Counselor Bradley?
No questions, just some things.
Thank you very much.
Sir Martinez?
No questions.
Okay, all right, have you actually hooked up customers in the South County?
In which county?
Yeah, Brookings and Harbor.
We have over four hundred fifty customers at this time in Brookings and the harbor, and we're turning on another sixteen hundred homes next month, the Harbor part, and Brookings all the way to the California border, and then we're heading this way. And we have seven crews doing construction full-time as we speak right now. We're fully staffed in our office. We invite you to come up and say hello in the office up there, and then we also take calls at the Coos-Curry Electric office. That's what Keith helps me do down there. So we're a big team. We got Coos-Curry Electric supporting us in every way, shape, and form. We will also get involved in a lot of youth community events. If you have something you want us to do, Keith and I have partnered at the hip on community events, so if you see something that, you know, like the Azalea Festival in Brookings or the Pirate Festival, you see stuff down here that, hey, you know what? We need somebody to give us a hand. Give us both a call, and we'd love to talk to you about that. We have a budget that allows us to help the communities. That's what we're here for.
On the main one-on-one, are you gonna share Zipley's line or are you gonna put our own name?
Put our own name.
Okay. Main Street's gonna love that. One more to bury.
Well, you know, I can tell you, I truly understand, but like I've said, in the end of the day, you're gonna have some great internet opportunities for people that want to pick and choose. You've got some spectrum, you've got some Zipley, and you're gonna have Beacon Broadband. So it's really a lucky day for Gold Beach, once, at the end of the day, people can choose. That is definitely, our prices, we don't plan on raising our prices for at least five years, so, I mean, it's, we're locked in. We wanna make sure everybody has affordable internet at the right price, and we're gonna take care of it. If they have low income, we're gonna take care of them. If they have upper income, and you want a lot, we've got two gigs we can give you, plus security system, plus phone, and we can really operate some great packages.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a great day. All right, update on public contracting rules. Oh, I have to open a public hearing for that one. Public hearing is open at six twenty-two.
Okay, on page ten, at the bottom, you can read that statement there. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Nice meeting you.
Thanks so much.
Ooh, it's a long one.
Well, just that, this is a joint hearing, Boba.
A joint hearing of the council and the local contracting review board and resolution adopting public contracting rules update.
No, on the bottom of page ten, where it says requested action, open the public hearing with the following statement.
I'm on page ten.
Mine says page ten of hundred and forty-five?
Yeah, I was on page ten of the PDF. So I was on the right page.
Okay.
Oh, it's the same page.
Yeah, it should be.
Oh, wow, crazy. Okay. This is a joint public hearing of the Gold Beach City Council, Local Contracting Review Board regarding amendments to the city's public contracting rules. Open the hearing for comments, discuss any comments received, close the vote. Okay, I'll read that one.
Okay, so.
Okay, so we opened at six twenty-two. Do you want to introduce it, and then I'll ask the public for a comment?
Yes, just for the record, because we haven't done this since 2020, the local contract review board, that's you guys also, but it is considered a separate entity, sort of like the Urban Renewal Agency. So this is a joint meeting of you, so the state requires local governments to adhere to certain.
Hold on one second, it says we're muted.
Do what?
Are we muted?
Not, not that I can see. I mean, I'm not muted on the screen. Nope, he's not muted.
Okay, we can be heard.
Okay.
Is that no one's just on?
Barely.
Okay, so ORAS requires local governments to adhere to public contracting rules, and the state has those in ORAS Chapter 279A, but most small entities opt to have their own rules that are in compliance with that. We have had that for, since about 2011, something like that. Our attorneys prepare all this. We, they're in compliance with the laws, so I don't wanna, like, belabor it, but this is stuff that, every time the rules change, our attorneys update it for us, and they do it stupid cheap for us. This whole package was less than two hundred dollars. They just put it all together, and then they send it to us. They send us the notice, they send us the package, they send us everything. And I was talking to the mayor before the meeting, and the pages that make up the actual public contracting rules, that if you decide to adopt them, those don't get read, like, line by line. They're like scripture. You just go find what you need when you need it. So don't think that I have read every one of those line by line. Whenever I have to do a public contract, I go look for the section that I need, and that's all we do. So it is a public hearing. We do have a member, someone in the audience, so if they want to comment, then obviously wanna talk about that. And then, once the hearing is closed, if you're ready to adopt it, there's a motion in there for you.
Is there any public comment on our public purchases? No, okay. Close the public hearing at six twenty-six PM. And are there any council questions? Counselor Beer?
So this would just, I'm sorry, specifically be like for the leases for copiers and a lot of that, lower-grade stuff? I was kind of reading through it, and it seemed like it, but I don't.
No, this is for, for large contracts, over a certain amount.
So it's not for leases, it's for purchases?
Well, no, I mean, it can be for a lease if it's for a large amount, but if it's under, if it's under a certain amount of money, no, then you don't have to go through the public procurement process. So copier leases wouldn't necessarily be, if we leased, like, a hundred copiers, yes, then you would have to go out and get bids. We leased four copiers.
And so it says in here that it's based off of the value we set. Have we changed that recently? I forget what the number we had prior for what you would be able to go for as staff prior without whatever.
That's actually in the city code.
Wait, that was coming up for discussion, too, as we transitioned that amount, or did we already decide that, the amount?
That'll be in the other executive session.
All right, there we go.
Yeah, currently, the city code gives the administrator up to seventy-five thousand dollars spending authority, but keep in mind, that's spending authority that has been approved in the budget. So like, here's an example. Year before last, we had to buy a new backhoe. Well, new to us, new backhoe. That ended up being close to a hundred thousand dollars. It was approved in the budget, so that was something that, you know, was able to be purchased. Actually, that's not a good example, under seventy-five thousand, but, but like purchasing a vehicle, if it's, if it's a forty thousand dollar vehicle, as long as it was approved in the budget, the city administrator doesn't have to come back to the council to ask.
So if it's over, then you have to come to the.
Yes, that's why.
Or if it wasn't in the.
That's why whenever we make contracts, like for the, like for the water intake project, where we hired the contractor, you have to approve that contract. And typically, what you do is you'll say, you know, we accept the bid from whatever the engineer says, and then you do the contracting authority to the city administrator to, like, sign the paperwork and stuff, so you don't have to be bothered with that. But yeah, we don't make a whole lot of huge purchases.
So it'd be like the public works trucks, the police vehicles, because you already have that alternating through the budget system?
Correct, as long as it's budgeted. If it weren't in the budget, then before we were to purchase, like, say we had to make an emergency purchase, the backhoe died, and it can't be repaired, and we can't wait until, typically, what we do is we know something's gonna be wearing out, so then we budget for it the following year. But say we needed to budget it now, we would have to come to the council and say, okay, it died, we can't wait till next year, we need to, so then we would do a supplemental budget.
Counselor Skinner, any questions?
I think on page ten, I think the numbers, the ten thousand, that they increased the small procurement threshold from five thousand to ten thousand. So is this for anything over ten thousand dollars? Is that how I read it, or is that the wrong?
What it is, is in the section in there about small procurements is like, you have to, you don't have to get bids, but you have to get, you have to call and get either verbal or written quotes. So say, like remodeling, you know, we would, we would have to try to get three quotes from people if the work was gonna be five thousand or less, up to five thousand previously. The state has now raised that threshold because the cost of everything has gone up. So now, we don't, we don't have to go and get bids if it's under ten thousand. We can just say, okay, we wanna hire you. But that's more, that's not so much a council thing, it's more of a function in the administration portion, where we don't have to do that anymore. And honestly, we usually deal a lot with the section that's called sole source, where because we're in such a remote area, we often can't get even two bids, much less three. So typically, we go with what's called sole source, meaning they're the only one here, so we have to hire them. Bigger cities have more competition.
Okay, any questions? Okay, Counselor Bradley?
Nope.
Counselor Martinez?
No, thank you.
Okay. So I think part of probably why the state did that as well is that it's really expensive to pay and get, I mean, to get bids.
Sometimes.
So anything under five thousand dollars now, and it does make sense that you wanna be as expedited as possible. Okay, so there is a suggested motion on page eleven.
And I know that's a big giant mouthful, but it covers everything, that's why.
I can make a motion.
Okay, Counselor Martinez is going to make a motion. He's gonna speak in his gym boots.
I make the motion that the council and the council acting as the local contract review board adopt resolution R-2223-08, a joint resolution of the city council and local contract review board opting out of the attorney general's model public contracting rules and amending public contracting rules for the city of Gold Beach.
One second. We have a motion on the floor. By Counselor Martinez, seconded by Counselor Bradley. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. Counselor Skinner?
Aye.
Counselor Beer?
Aye.
Counselor Bradley?
Aye.
Counselor Martinez?
Aye.
All right, four to zero with Counselor Madison absent. Okay, then next is an ARCA rebate policy resolution.
Okay, I'm gonna turn that over to Mr. Pagano.
I meant to put a page number on it.
Page one twenty-two.
Page one twenty-two?
Yes.
All right. So at the last council meeting, council decided to ask staff to go ahead and come up with some criteria so that we could have something set for our program, for the ARCA stuff. These were a few of the things that were addressed, so we put them in to see if there was additional things you guys would want in there, or if this looked good to you guys. Counselor Skinner, would you like to start?
I found it looked good. Before I was reading all the details, I was wondering if it should end 2023 or 2024, so I'm not really part of either way. If we had twelve thirty-one twenty-three or twelve thirty-one twenty-four, I'd be okay with either. I don't think we need to go past twenty-four. With the interest that we've had so far, it seems like serving ten to eighteen families with that hundred thousand, see, I think I did that math right, would seem okay. It'd be nice if we could do more, but again, it seems to fit the interest to have a hundred thousand. And in the suggested motion, there was one, I think, that's a suggested motion, on page one twenty-six. At the end, the last bullet point, it says, council discussed six percent of the total construction cost. I think it should just say the rebate is six percent of the total construction cost, including permits, et cetera, with the maximum rebate of ten thousand and the minimum of five. So I just think that there's that edit there. And then, whatever other people think on that final date and the amount. But I'm very excited that we have this, and it's given me a very good city of Gold Beach bragging rights in many meetings. It's a pretty cool program.
So clarification on the resolution itself?
The last bullet point, it says council discussed, but I think it should just read, the rebate will cover six percent of the total construction cost, including permits, with a minimum or a maximum of ten thousand and a minimum of five thousand, or flip it, a minimum and a maximum, whatever.
Ten thousand, those have two meanings.
You know what's so funny? I missed that till you just said that. My eye caught that.
Yeah, the mayor.
Or the column is in the wrong spot.
So you wanna change that last sentence?
Yeah.
So the rebate will cover six percent of the total construction cost, including permits, et cetera, with a maximum rebate of ten thousand and a minimum of five thousand.
Correct.
Okay.
That would be, that's my figure.
Okay, so as we go around, let us know if you agree with Counselor Skinner's. Counselor Beer?
Yeah, I appreciate everybody coming for making it a little bit more official, so we have something to refer to. And Counselor Skinner, I agree a hundred percent, very direct with the words, so that there's no if, ands, or buts about it on what we're trying to get done and what we wanna see. Do we need to add any annotation there that, you know, if we didn't spend all the money, or we're beyond a deadline to spend that money? Or can we extend this program, say, another six months as we're going if, for some reason, I didn't really, Brookings, you know, forty thousand dollars has been spent, you know, we could change the, by having that set date, if we wanna extend it, we can also change the parameters. So if we're not seeing people follow through anymore, we might wanna change the numbers later, and that would be acceptable, I would think.
I think the plan was to revisit this in a couple of months because there's, we've gotten another, there were two payments, well, three payments altogether totaling a little over five hundred thousand. This isn't gonna come close to spending that. So the council was gonna revisit other projects to spend the money on that fall within the criteria. that fall within the criteria of the ARPA funds.
Right. I, I think what the intent was to get something in writing at target and then if we need to change it, we'll just do another resolution. I think we have until twenty-six to spend it?
Well, as long as it's earmarked. You have to have it earmarked for a project that qualifies for ARPA.
By when?
Twenty-six, I believe it was.
Oh, okay.
It doesn't have to be spent by twenty-six. It needs to be earmarked for a project that is ARPA qualified.
Okay.
Yeah, and we, so we earmarked the first portion to be a hundred thousand for housing.
With this project?
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, twenty-six, apparently. Cause that's what we're doing with all our money.
Counselor, are you done?
Yes.
Counselor Bradley?
I think I'd make the recommendation that we combine the second and third bullet points that where we end the program, I think the one to twenty-four is probably, to where we end the program either on twelve thirty-one twenty-four or when we've hit the cap of a hundred thousand.
Okay.
Same, same line and it leaves no- But I do like the, the extending it to twenty-twenty-four, just in case some people, it's still getting stuff built faster than they have.
Then you can always redo the resolution.
Okay, so have an expiration date of twenty-four or when the hundred thousand is used?
I like, I like twenty-four, just cause especially some people might be feeling, need a little more time to pull some triggers, but waiting for inflation to settle.
Counselor Martinez?
Well, the incentive though, well, the incentive was to get people to do this as soon. Now, I understand that after having a little experience in the permit office, that people sometimes would like to move quicker than they're allowed to. So, but, but I guess what we're saying is that we may revisit this again, perhaps before the end of this year. And so to extend it now, well, maybe in line with what we're, we may have a chance to revisit it again. We feel like in between now and the time that we revisit it again, we realize that we may actually get this completely spanned, a hundred thousand for twenty-twenty-three. Well, go for us. Yeah, I see no problem extending it another year. Thank you for allowing me to think that through.
Another guy didn't think so, huh?
My thought too with that concern is I did go through my head is that, like putting them together, having a hundred thousand is kind of is a time bomb. It's to be in people's mind and hey, we need to get on, may have till twenty-twenty-four, but the money being spent, if I don't get on my project soon, I won't be able to provide a rebate.
Yeah, 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 that's true. We don't want them to think, oh, I have time. We need to mainly press the issue that this is a popular program and in times of the essence.
So great, yeah. So we have two suggested changes, one is from Counselor Skinner, one is from Counselor Bradley. Is the council in favor of those changes?
Three, so one is changing the date, one is combining the two lines, and then one is editing the last.
That's where I have. So if you wanna adopt it tonight, you can just say as amended.
I'll make sure everybody's okay with the first.
Yep.
If I may speak first, then yes, I will hear those changes.
Okay. It's, and everybody's okay. Okay, so. Deputy Administrator Pagano, do you have those changes?
I do, so we're gonna combine line one and line two, so have an expiration date of two thousand twenty-four. And we're gonna change the last dot to rebate is six percent of total construction cost, including permits, et cetera, with a maximum rebate of ten thousand and a minimum rebate of five thousand.
And then the combining one and two to be, or when the funds allocated reach, the expiration is twenty-twenty-four or when funds expended reach a hundred K, whichever is first. Right?
Sounds right to me.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Counselor?
On that line, reading it out loud, the total construction cost, including permits, et cetera, can we, what would et cetera look like other than permits? And can't we just say total construction cost or without that?
Well, building permits, we can, but I mean, it's gonna be like your dirt work, all that kinda stuff too. So any, anything that you're going to need to do to get your construction ready or done?
Cause construction costs may or may not include the permit cost. So, in some people's mind.
I guess I was thinking, I'm trying to be more pessimistic, what et cetera could also continue. But it's okay, cause I'm gonna go over ten thousand dollars. What people would say, et cetera, could be, they-
Well, if it didn't inherently develop the ADU, you wouldn't be able to include it. So if you're like, well, I'm gonna turn this side of my house into an ADU and put a deck out front. Sorry, you're on your own foot tracks.
Are you concerned about possible abuse?
Yeah, I think it's okay though, cause it's a low amount of money and I think, I'm gonna stick with me trying to be not pessimistic, those people are trying to convert me to shop.
As long as it's a break down-
Yeah, because they have to turn, they have to turn in everything, right?
Yep, we have the application and worksheet that we-
I remember the worksheet, thank you, I remember the law.
We have a passive praiser that checks it.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the resolution as amended?
I will make that.
I will second that motion. Do you? Yeah, you do.
Can I, can I just say as amended and be known? Probably not. Okay, I make the motion that the council adopt resolution R two-two-two-three-dash-oh-nine. A resolution establishing council policies regarding the ARPA ADU rebate program as amended.
Is there a second?
Well, second that.
Alright, so we have a motion on the floor from Counselor Vera, seconded by Counselor Skinner. Approving the resolution as amended, is there any discussion? I'll call the question, Counselor Skinner?
Aye.
Counselor Bradley?
No, Vera? Aye.
Counselor Bradley?
Aye.
Counselor Martinez?
Aye.
Alright, motion passes four to zero with Counselor Madison absent. Alright, we have a consent calendar. Did you get any questions online?
I did not. Be happy to answer any of the interviews though, although of course I didn't print.
There's no questions on the consent calendar, then we can move to make a motion.
I have one question?
And Counselor Skinner?
That I'm gonna ask, I have eight questions written, but one that I will ask. Could we get a, from the visitor center, I guess visitor center description of the last float event? Cause I only know this, the touristy fun end of it and I'd like to learn more about it. Cause it is a pretty high ticket item, the twenty thousand dollars.
That, that's the cost of the floats. That, that's how much the floats cost us. We, we started this, two thousand nine, it was before need. The, the treasure hunting portion of it, they hide the floats along the beach weekly. And then the, I don't think we do the receipts anymore. Last year, cause we didn't do the first two years of COVID. And then last year, we just gave floats to the businesses that were participating. That way they didn't have to come to the visitor center anymore. If you spend twenty-five dollars or more in a store, you get a float for free. So, so the fifteen thousand is just the actual cost of the floats.
And the other five thousand is a promotion material?
The other five thousand.
With sixteen thousand in the budget spent and then twenty thousand dollars budgeted for it?
If we budgeted twenty, that's-
Just, oh, just the, so just the cost to them.
Yeah, that was what we budgeted.
And how many, do you remember-ish?
Pardon?
How many that buys, do you remember?
Not off the top of my head, but I can get that for you.
I think I understand, so marketing of that type of event would be under marketing?
Yes.
Like, but it might not-
Yeah, the glass, that really, that's just the cost of the floats. The, like the TV and all that, we're always, well, we're not always running TV ads, but when we're running TV ads, they do different ones. And when it's getting close to float season, it's just that ad. So we don't really separate it out that low, but the glass floats is, is, that's just the floats.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion?
I make the motion that the council adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Counselor Bradley, a second for Counselor Martinez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, Counselor Skinner?
Aye.
Counselor Vera?
Aye.
Counselor Bradley?
Aye.
Counselor Martinez?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero with Counselor Madison absent. Okay, city goals, so y'all study and pick your top three. I know that Counselor Skinner emailed us a A-plus.
Oh, I thought it was like a D minus, cause they're doing, and stuff, or-
You're the one that did it.
Like you're reading on a curve, alright, I take it.
That's cute, that's a teacher, reading on a curve.
Well, I'll say my three first, but I have no idea, I was teasing, I don't know how to choose. They're all really tied together. It's hard to choose three in the first place and then to rank three. I'm gonna go with fiscal sustainability, number one is number one. And then my other tour, enhance quality of life and address housing deficiencies, which also go hand in hand, as in like if someone has a place to live, they would like a nice quality of life in our community. I'm gonna, I guess, we have to rank them, right, Anthony, as we take notes?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm gonna say one, nine, the housing deficiencies, and then two, a nice quality of life within the community. Because the police department, he said, was fully staffed. Fire department has twenty-nine or thirty-nine volunteers. Saw the number. It was right here. Twenty is fine. Yeah, I'm gonna go with those three and I will pass to the next person to give that a try.
Counselor Vera, are you gonna talk about?
Uh, actually, I a hundred percent agree, number one is kinda number one. Mostly because doing that correctly lets us handle all the other stuff, hopefully correctly. So fiscal sustainability first, of course. And then I think I'm going to fall under influence, economic growth. I believe that one supports number one, which was of the important topic. And it will also be how we find a way to take care of number two, enhance quality of life, which will be my third option, okay, that was too many numbers, but. So fiscal sustainability, well by influence, economic growth, and then finally enhance quality of life.
Okay. Counselor Bradley?
Five, two, nine.
What was that?
Five, two, nine. Any special order? Five, five, first, five, two, nine.
Okay. He did it so fast.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, so number five, number two, and number nine?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, sorry, in, in that order?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Fishing, giving us letters.
I thought you said five through nine.
Okay, Counselor Martinez?
I chose four, six, nine. Save community mainly because, well, it says right there, to provide clean drinking water and wastewater treatment. Those are our two main functions as a city, as I understand it, our main infrastructural services. Well, I figure if that's what we mainly do, we ought to do it exceptionally well, always. Since that is our main thing we do. Influence economic growth, number six. I thought about it even more today. I teach at the high school and had a conversation with colleagues, other teachers there, when you ask yourself, is there enough jobs for kids graduating here if they wanna stay? The answer was no. But maybe, it was maybe, we don't know. But I, I'd like to see what that looks like for us to work on that. And then obviously, yes, address housing deficiencies. We have people here that need a place to live already and we need to take care of them. And so I, my reasoning is stick to what we do already and do it, continue to do it exceptionally well. Let's see what we can do to enhance more economic activity. And then let's make sure people have a, a nice place to live. Those are my reasoning and hopefully they lead to support all our objectives.
Do you want the tally tonight or can we give it to you?
You can do it later.
Thank you.
Do you guys want my bin?
Please. We would like to do that.
My order would be number nine first, number eight second, and number three third. And you guys have already covered nine and eight, the most thing with eight, I think, we've got the zoning change last year, but now we have to get that put into some sort of communication so people know about it.
Okay, so what is-
People are actually going to do-
What was your two, I'm sorry?
Nine, eight, three, in that order. And then improve internal systems, I think that's more because we have staff turnover. And I think that that's gonna be a focus whether we focus on it or not. Which is something that has to happen to turnover. And then can we maybe call Counselor Madison tomorrow for her orders?
Yeah, what was your other one?
Nine, eight, three.
On your eight, would your comment on eight fit into number nine?
Sort of does. But I'm not allowed to put two on one, right? But they all tie together, to be honest with you.
That's how I feel.
It's, it's a match. And then what I'd like to do is after we decide what everybody's priority is, is try to figure out a couple, a couple things that you want me to make sure is on a regular basis that we're working on. I think Counselor Madison calls some of the others.
Something that we can actually, realistically come up with, I think, the closest thing anyone can-
They do tie it together quite well, cause the same reason that I was, I had the same reason that Counselor Martinez went with four.
Well, there's always the subtle bull points.
They're just really intertwined, cause with the safe drink, what I thought was the safe drinking water, I mean, since we're already doing that, my thought is thinking ahead. So our kids and grandkids still have safe drinking water and don't get footed walls up with the surprise bill.
I mean, all of this doesn't tie in exactly, yeah, the, it's just having, being, spending so much time in that high school right now. It's, there's, there is questionable water safety in there due to the age of the building. Every lunch, every day of lunch, kids, you know, leave the campus, walk down the street with the-
Yeah, I was just looking at the safety, your, your school zone visibility and that's what-
It's just, it's a little precarious. It's, I feel a little, I feel a little scared sometimes, walking my nine-year-old daughter just from the school down to the store, because it's a narrow footpath and a very short distance between you and a car coming thirty miles an hour. Or a log truck or a car. I just, yeah, so anyway, that's where my mind is, but.
Well, and I know that Morgan brought that up, who's a student of yours? Is that right?
Our student of yours.
He brought up on number four, he brought up that last bullet point in his first proposal.
But it's so, it's refreshing, since you guys have been on, but to hear your voices and your opinions on, oh, sure, pros and I, like I said, I feel like a lot of, like my decisions are halfway in with, with everyone else's, with the clear consensus being that number nine is something we all think we need to focus on, especially Canada. And Mayor, you perhaps being the senior most member up here right now, having been city government longer than all of us, is that, I'm not speaking, telling tales out of school when I say that now, nevermind.
Me, yeah, I knew it was way too long.
No, it was not way too long.
So I really appreciate you, you all. So, I really appreciate you offering your opinion as well. Idea holds considerable weight up here.
I think Mayor may have more experience in all of us combined in the city government.
When nine's a step.
One day it's done.
Okay, I have to apologize. I missed the part of the agenda where we get citizen comments. And we have a citizen in the room, and I should have already called on you. Would you like to speak now?
Sure.
Go on, give us your name. You don't have to go share address because we don't wanna.
Joe Smith.
Anyway, no, we were.
Just on several occasions, I've been in here in the city council meetings and have a very hard time hearing what y'all are saying. I can see that you're talking, and I am somewhat hearing impaired, and I have my hearing aids, and I'm still missing a lot of conversation. And so, either you're not close enough to your mics or mics are not turned on.
We don't have mics.
Okay, so it's very hard for the audience to even comprehend what's going on.
Okay.
That's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gymnasium boys.
Goal number two, enhance quality.
Improve internal systems.
One time we were gonna mic here, did that fail?
We have a system that we ordered, and it's still in the box because I hate AV. And so, I, we need to.
Have one of the millennials do it.
Yeah, to try to, I don't even know if it'll work, but it, it has mics with speakers that it's supposed to boost the sound. So, we will have that for the next meeting.
And without the perch, it's only taking recording from your computer.
Well, the perch doesn't, all it does is record.
I'm just telling you what I got from feedback. Only person that can be heard on Zoom is you.
And I don't know why, because it's not.
Somehow this mic isn't working. So.
And I don't know why, because my mic on here is not on. So, I don't know how I can be heard when.
I'm gonna try to listen to this later and see if it worked, but it sounds like there are technical difficulties.
Okay.
So, and we ended so perfect that one time. Thankfully, we're not in the pandemic and meeting remotely, but can you hear me?
Now, yes.
Okay. I get quiet too, so you guys can hit me. All right, thank you. Next. Info for new directions upcoming CBA negotiations.
Okay, so, the, let me get there, sorry.
So, collective bargaining agreements. Our attorney has a website, and they have a recommendation that electric officials don't actually be part of the bargaining team and why, and it's explained in the packet. But they do recommend that we sit down in an executive session and set out guidelines for the person or persons that are gonna do that negotiation, so they know what their parameters are. So, I wanted to make sure this was in the packet so you could think about it because bargaining is probably gonna be next month, so Mr. Pagano is going to need our input.
So, there's nothing that you have to do tonight. It's just the article's there. It gives you a little bit of idea about collective bargaining agreements. And then just be prepared next month to give Mr. Pagano some direction on when he goes into the negotiations.
And you've done this several times, right?
Three times.
So, they talk about wage. Did they talk about other things like equipment or what we pay for for uniforms?
I have to say the last, that all the times that I've done it, it's been very non-adversarial. It typically, it's salary. And prior to going in, which that will be done for Mr. Pagano, we do, every three years, we do a new wage study, so that will be completed. But, yeah, I mean, one year they asked for an increase on boot allowance. And there's really, I mean, the last three times, there's really been very little they've asked for. So, it hasn't, it hasn't been adversarial in any way, and it didn't take very long. In fact, we didn't actually even, the last two times, we didn't actually even meet. We just emailed because it was like they were fine with how things were. And for the next council meeting, I'll also send you guys ahead of time what the current CBA is so that you can see, like, there's certain things, when you give him guidance, the attorney, one of our attorneys is part of the team as well. It probably won't be Diana, the one that wrote this. It'll probably be Mark. But there's certain things that you can't do or can't ask, but the attorney will keep you away from those things. Police unions have a lot of protections.
Any questions?
I just want to applaud you for talking about it not having to be a zero-sum adversarial process as stated in the article on page 134.
Because it can get really ugly.
We can get, but we all are working on the same goal.
Right, and in the past, it's been ugly. The mayor can attest to that, but.
When they first started, it was not very pretty.
And right now, we have, we have a really great police department, so I don't anticipate there being any problems. I really don't.
And speaking of my experience, I think it was on the budget committee when it started. Mr. Vera, any questions, comments?
No.
Bradley?
No.
Okay. Next, babe. Review, possible revision to resolution R 1920-03 regarding housing emergency declaration. So, there was a question last month or the month before, I can't remember, I think it was last month, about whether or not we ever did a housing declaration, and it looks like what we did is affirm the counties. So, I guess the question is, do we want our own? It sounds like the counties is sunsetting this year. I don't know if they'll redo it. And my question for staff is, does a declaration of emergency do anything for the city?
Uh, no, I don't, because this isn't like an emergency, like a FEMA type emergency. This is just, it's acknowledging, you know, within your jurisdiction that this is something that's of great concern to you, that type of thing. So, so, yeah, it doesn't like give us any FEMA money or anything. I think it did help when, when we applied for the grant through DLC. I think it helped there, you know, to just say that, you know, this is a big issue and we need money to address it.
I'm wondering if that would help us with grants as well.
Yeah.
So, I wonder, would you guys be open to a declaration that's all ours? And maybe we could use some of the housing needs analysis data in here?
If you want to create it. I was okay with just, but this one's sunsetting, so we'd have to have something new if we wanted to do that.
Or we can wait till they do theirs and we can renew it based on theirs.
Senior schedule, so.
You know, theirs is different. I mean, 66% of Curry County is owned by the government, but not 66% of Gold Beach. Or the will be driven renewal, not urban growth family. Mixing my terms. So, I'll start with Counsel Skinner. Do you wanna do a new one, wait for theirs?
I would not like to write a new one myself. I would be willing to wait for theirs, but I would be willing to read a new one somebody else wrote. Vote on that.
Counsel Vera.
I don't know. If we're not gonna get anything major out of it, I don't like the emergency declaration thrown around at all times. And I think we're addressing it, so if there's some other way to go about it than just an emergency declaration and instead say, hey, this is how we're handling it, and it's a problem we have, and just kind of put it out there that, you know, we're doing our best, and then it still exists, so. If there's an opportunity to take advantage of it to leverage money somewhere else later down the line, I'd be happy to see that, but, you know, playing chicken little is not, not the catch. Yeah, I wanna be doing a bunch of stuff here trying to solve the problem. I don't think we need somebody else to solve for us.
Thank you, sir.
Counsel Bradley.
I think most of this still stands, so reaffirming it isn't necessarily a bad idea. As far as writing one, if it looks like it's going to use sunset for some of our projects that we're working on, if it's sunset before we can get started on some of those, I mean, they might want to consider writing our own if it would help with grant money on some of those things we've discussed. But at this moment, maybe the most just reaffirm will be already. We're still, we're still in it. We're dealing with it, but it's still, the problem still exists.
Is there any vacancies for rentals?
Oh, with the company, with the one company, there is a massive turnover. What happened right now, and I'm sure they're already all filled. Their hand event is not even be able to get into it to make sure that they're all up to date and safe for moving.
Okay. Counsel Martinez.
I have to finally.
What?
We can fill in the gaps if we see the gaps down the road. So, go ahead, George.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Um, I just, I'm sorry, Mayor. Where were you finding the sundown thing? I didn't see that.
It's not on this, but apparently the one that we're mimicking, the county, we're affirming the counties, and I was told the counties has a sunset this year. So, maybe what we ought to do is we, we put this on the agenda a couple months or look at what the county does.
Okay, alright. So, I wasn't seeing it here, so I'm like, I'm not finding that.
It's not on here. Counselor Madison told us it's sunsetting.
Okay, okay.
And so, you know, I don't think it's any different. The difference is that we, and I honestly think the city of Gold Beach has done more than any other entity towards this solution, but we still have an emergency. Even our hospital employees that have a really good income can't fight housing. It's kind of a shock. And we've had more starts in the last five years than we did the previous probably 15.
Yeah.
Other than when that big bulge before 2007, and then it dropped. And then the one in the south end of town, you know, that's mostly commercial, but, yeah. You can shut up now. Go ahead.
I wanna say one thing about language and about using the terms like emergency or crisis. I've been helping out around my council moments, council comments, but I was talking about something. I'm like, I don't know if you'd call it a challenge or a problem, a challenge or a crisis. And the person who was smack in it was like, it's a crisis, like, there's no doubt about it. So, I sometimes try to step back into that and remember that for me, it's not because I'm in a fortunate place to be. But for a lot of the people in our community, it is a crisis. So, I'm okay with keeping it, especially with the idea, in addition to grant money, into focusing the conversation. So, focusing people's time and energy and money resources coming in, I think it's an appropriate.
Okay, sounds like you're not gonna wanna write our own, so we'll just wait and see what the county does, and there.
So, like revisit in a couple months? Okay.
Can we?
Might I suggest we have, ask Counsel Madison to find out when it sunsets?
Yeah.
And then, and then it dries up before then.
Yes, thank you, Counsel Madison.
Okay, so the Oregon Mayor's Association had us write a one-pager, and we made edits to the last version. This is the pretty version. And they wanted me to approve it, and I thought, you know what, we have time before they need it for the council to actually approve it. So, I would like to know if there's any changes we need to make on this. It does meet what we said we wanted to do, but there may be a word or do you want to change? Start with Counsel Skinner.
At the late Oregon Cities Day at the Capitol last month, we saw the printed format of these for the different things, and they're good. And the staffers and legislators, especially our brand-new legislator in Salem, they're just a really useful tool to give basic facts and to give a point where people can start asking questions, where staffers and legislators can reach out and be like, okay, so this is this, tell us more. So, I'm really excited about this and what I saw in Salem.
Counsel Vera. This came up while you were, not quite a, Counsel Vera.
No, I think it's, I think it's good. It addresses our challenges in there. I can find a way to really highlight on that. So, it was even more prominent when someone was reading through here that, you know, we can have everything that big cities thinks is a solution, but it's still not gonna cure our problem. It might stem a symptom or two, but it won't help in, in the overarching cure of the issue. So, outside of that, I don't know if we can, if you would bolden that.
Embolden what?
The, the lack of resources around us, the fact that, you know, we have, we have, we have a homeless issue, but we have a transient issue as well, which really alters any form of public opinion. And then specifically, you know, we don't have, we don't have addiction assistance that's, that's to that level of what folks would expect.
Okay. Counsel Bradley.
Kennedy?
Counsel Martinez.
I think it's really well done. Very clear, each subject seems to have a direct point and easy to understand.
All right.
Sorry, Joe. I think it's good, easy to understand, direct.
I would like to pick your hand up.
And well-designed. I like it.
Yeah, for, for those that can't see what we're looking at, it's, it's a request for, which is, I think it's $40 a person, it's $95,000, and then $350,000 for public restrooms so that we can restore some of our bathrooms in the park and then possibly add another set to alleviate the needs of people relieving themselves in places that aren't appropriate. That's part of what cities do, is keep things clean and in the right places, and we're having trouble doing that. Okay, I will let Angela Vera know that. The next is the magic mushrooms. And I believe that Counsel Skinner and I spoke about it, and we were thinking that maybe something similar to the marijuana ordinance where they're a thousand feet from a school and a thousand feet from each other, and that would limit us to maybe four, three or four, rather than having 20 if we don't have any limits at all.
Yeah, I was really looking at just limiting the number. The number I drive through Brookings, see the number of marijuana shots taking up retail space and thinking about the youth factor. There are already six businesses on Main Street that kids can't go in. And if we're trying to make all these improvements with Main Street, if we're trying to work with the youth, I just think having a Main Street where they can access it. So, whatever that might be, I don't, I was, thought, I thought about looking up what the rules were for the marijuana shop, and I didn't know if it was a limit of two or if it was just the zoning requirements that thus limited it to two. But I just, well, this is a really important resource for a lot of people. And people are doing more and more research on the use of mushrooms for various things, recreational and medical, psychic to other fiscal and psychological medical treatments. I just don't want to see our limited space being used up in town. And definitely with the parameters of keeping things away from schools and wherever else. And daycare centers, as we're trying to open up daycare centers, I just didn't even think about that. Because it's a huge problem with licensing and where the people can have certified daycare centers within so many feet of certain types of places. Didn't even think about that, which is. Didn't even think about that till just now. So that was, that's my thought, and that's why I ask, so.
Thank you. Um, Councilor Beer.
I didn't even think about the daycare piece. Yeah, um, the way that the state chooses to do these things is oftentimes, uh, for lack of better words, kind of joke, and, and I really disagree with the way that that went, I think, the way that Curry Cameron noted when we were looking at it, um, that they were predominantly like, mm, no, we don't want to see it, but the big three make the decisions, um, so I think we should be as stringent as possible. I don't know, some, some input from folks, um, to see if it's something that we would be comfortable saying would have any form of success in our city would be a route I'd be happy to take a look at. Um, I don't like the idea of limiting something to the point where it's like, oh, there's only one spot and only one thing. But at the same time, um, you know, we talk about people using things and abusing things in ways that aren't good, and one of our goals is a safe community, and, um, even if it doesn't become our top three, I think it's important for us to balance that, so. Very, very stringent on it at the very least.
Whoa, choose a rubber chair.
Yeah, see?
Taking.
See, anyways, um, yeah.
Your mama says set up straight.
I know, yeah, I know better.
Okay, Councilor Bradley.
Administrator Fritz and them, I'm not, don't have the marijuana regulation in head, does it have a restriction restricting them to have to be in a commercial zone as well?
Yes.
Then I'd like, as far as a resale spot mimicking our, our marijuana.
And we can't regulate the number per se, but you can regulate the number by, uh, by the, we can regulate the time, manner, and place. Um, and so the thousand foot is already in statute, so that's already there. We do, in our marijuana portion, we do reiterate that, but it's already in the statute, so it can't, it can't be near schools and stuff. And daycare is included in the definition of school.
So, though that's for an existing daycare, the problem that we're running into in the community is that when somebody tries to go put in a new building, then they're already there.
But we have a map, um, that we did a couple of years ago with the thousand feet is, and, and it's, it covers a lot of territory. It's because this, the two schools are kind of far enough away that there's a thousand foot around that, and a thousand, it, it covers a lot of area. That's why the two marijuana shops that we have are actually on that end of town, because that's really the closest they could get. Um, but the, what our marijuana rules say is that they can't, also can't be within a thousand feet of each other. Um, and I think that went into effect after the two, or at least one of them was put in. But, um, so yeah, so we can't limit the number per se, but you can limit it based on the time, manner, and place thing.
I just, I know it's really important on the quality of life for a lot of people, both recreational and medical use of substances, but it just is concerning to me too, just commercially, commercially, the whole balance of our community, so. Thank you, thanks for discussing.
I also think realistically, if someone's going to go resell it, probably is the product that the marijuana source would end up offering.
That's what I'm thinking.
The other question though is, never thought about it with marijuana because it takes such a massive, but what about, do we need to address manufacture?
Um.
Because mushrooms can be grown in a lot smaller area, they can be grown indoors in warehouses.
The marijuana rules include wholesale, retail, and manufacturing.
Okay, because if we need to regulate manufacture, I think we should limit the industrial.
I'll have to double check, I'll have to double check because I don't know if the marijuana is just in commercial or if it is in industrial, because I believe that, off the top of my head, because it's been a while, and you think I remember this because we've talked about weed forever, um, I want to say it was allowed in the industrial because the, we were talking about the smell and it would be better like if it were in industrial areas, because we really only have where Freeman is and then a little bit at the port.
Mm-hmm, now that's, I was saying that if someone decided to start a growing operation, it would be better to have them go rent a, go rent someplace at the port line on the main street.
Yeah, and we've had, we only have one person that's contacted us, correct?
Uh, yeah, we've got, we've got an application in already.
But that, but he is a manufacturer, he's not going to.
Wholesale only.
Yeah.
So we might want to address that one with the, with the magic mushrooms, I wouldn't be worried about marijuana because you'd need a lot bigger area than we've got, so anybody wrong. If anyone did decide to manufacture out here, they're going outside of city limits.
I think it's going to end up, and this is, I mean, just my own opinion.
Remember to speak up.
I think it's going to end up like marijuana, where everybody's going to think they're going to get rich quick, and then a year or two later, they realize that, oh no, that's not going to happen.
And then the third question maybe tack out like we did marijuana.
Um, that one we need to ask the attorney about, I don't know, with the marijuana, that was a big thing, I don't know if that's something possible, so we will ask.
That's it.
Councilor Martinez.
Really appreciate your comment about, uh, having our main street or main, uh, open to all ages as best we can. Uh, so that, yeah, that is a, I'm glad that that is already addressed. I'll have to research this a little bit more, I was under the impression that this would not, that as of now, the law doesn't say we can, it can be sold as retail, or anything like that, but I guess I got to read up more on it. That's all I have to offer.
Well, I have a question for Council Bradley. When you're growing it, what, with marijuana, when you're growing it, it's got a smell.
Oh.
And you've got to bring in a lot of power if you're going to do indoor, and then if you're making, um, extracts, it can be a fire safety issue. But I know nothing about mushrooms other than they usually grow in the dark.
It's not really bad.
They usually, yeah, they usually grow in the dark, my, my uncle Walt used to grow the, I can't remember which ones they were, the waltz takis or the sataki's or whatever it was. And he had, had log, he had oak, the growing oak, and it was outside, like, like most of our house mushrooms are grown in warehouses in the dark, like the stuff he cut up, cut up in salad, so that could be actually done in a warehouse and not externally, which is why I was wondering if we want to, if someone tries to man, wants to manufacture, we need to limit the industrial, so it's.
But is there a smell, or is there anything outside? What would the danger be? What's the public danger?
The public danger, uh, I'd rather see retail staying, staying in our commercial zones. That would be, that would be why I'd want to push it to the industrial areas where tourists, uh, Council Martinez walking his daughter isn't going to have to go walk in by and watch, see all these mushrooms growing in windows or.
I thought it was only, like, these were, in essence, in a way, almost like a bar, like it hadn't been consumed on, on location, and monitored by, you know, security of some sort. I didn't know it was a take it and go.
The rules aren't finished yet, that's part of the problem, which is why we can't, usually for me.
Yeah, I thought this was simply a.
That's why a lot of entities went ahead and waited a couple of years, and somehow or other I missed that, so, um, I didn't get it on our.
Also, I tried to just think ahead of what issues could be coming up, and trying, us as a council, trying to be ahead of it instead of being reactionary to something. Or, yeah.
Sounds like we all need to do a little more research, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this like we did marijuana, um, but we are going to be a target because we don't have a plan, and, um, Deputy Administrator Bragno speaking, your gymnasium at most, please.
So, right now, OHA has eighty-three pages of rules that they have to, that are required to even be approved for anything. So, I don't know if it's anything we need to look into at this point, I mean, they've got it on a regulation document right now.
And on the marijuana code, did we do that in our zone, or did we do that in our business code?
Our zoning code.
Would it be easier to do the business code?
Well, it was, it wasn't a use that was allowed, because we wanted to regulate it, the attorney said the best way to regulate it was through the zoning code. Like, this is a commercial use that is allowed or not allowed, you know, like a bar or a, um, retail store or whatever, because otherwise it would have fallen just under retail sales. But the attorney said, you know, if you guys want to regulate it, then it would be better to put the regulations in your zoning ordinance.
And if I remember our commercial code, it can't create dust, odor, smoke, anomalies.
And odor is one of the things.
Which is funny because the barbecue always has smoke.
Yeah.
But I think barbecue is supposed to.
Right next to it, right next to it.
And you can smell home raising the cave is when they're cooking chicken.
Kind of, you're too old for that.
So, you know, we have some flexibility there. Yeah, uh, it sounds like we need to bring this back.
With the additional piece of the, what Council Bradley brought up about production, wholesale and retail, all three.
I think long term we'll be, make it easy on ourselves mimicking the marijuana code as far as retail sales.
I haven't looked, does anybody look on the Lake Oregon Cities site, see if they have any suggestions yet?
No, but I think ask someone who were there.
Okay.
OHA does have, uh, fact sheets on its service center, which is a, you meet with the client, do it there, and there's like a license facilitator for this and some other stuff like that, and then I'm seeing another fact sheet for manufacturing off of their website, just through like fast scrolls, so they're, they're starting to come out with content that's easy to consume.
So it's the opposite of marijuana, marijuana you can't consume on site, with lotion you have to consume it outside.
Yeah, it's like, I don't, I don't know if there's more to it than just the service portion, if they're like, oh, you can also take home and whatever, you might have to, you know, here's your baggie for home, and prior to that, you have to go through a whole thing, you know, they're like, yeah, you're not going to know what purple means anymore, so.
Well, I'm, I'm, yeah, I just wonder if, if, the way I understood it, the way that it feels like the state is trying to direct it is to have it almost in a sense like a, uh, physical therapist's office, some sort of, uh, a nature of studying it for therapeutic, uh, reasons. As far as I know, but I should stop talking, I don't know enough.
The basic premise was this is medicine, and we want to experiment with it, and like you would any other kind of trust or trial.
That was helpless for that. Which in a way almost gives light to, or almost paints a picture of O'Leary as a, a resort town in a way, a, uh, you know, a spa retreat in a sense. Anyway.
Okay. So it sounds like we do want to do something, but we're literally not sure what, so maybe our attorney has a recommendation, and we can go from there.
Okay.
Happy day for you, Deputy Administrator Bragno.
I think we need Steph, we need some ideas where we want to be going if it becomes an issue.
Yeah. Okay, so the administrator's work.
Okay, so, uh, no building permits were issued for January, which is not surprising because that's our wet time of year. Um, Ron down at the wastewater plant, he has to monitor the water, I mean, the rainfall for the wastewater plant, so he always lets me know. And so we did have thirteen point three nine inches of rain for January, so, um, the police department stats are attached, uh, through the month of December and then also the calendar year.
Is that a typo on the far left that says one thousand two hundred and twenty-two, please tell me it was one hundred and twenty-two? The table with the police call. Uh, page one forty-three.
No, that's, that's not a typo.
Yeah, a hundred, they have that many.
Yeah.
So what was the number below that then? How come those?
Oh, sorry, I got them switched. The calendar year totals are on the bottom, that one eighteen should have been on, on the top, so that's good. But yeah, they, they have, they have about a hundred and twenty a month, so that would be, the twelve hundred would be about right, so. Sorry, yes, I, I did them on the wrong line.
That's about four days.
Um, yeah, that's probably about right, you know, that come in, that come in here. So, um, the fire department, there's an infographic that was put together based on the data that the chief provided us, and I didn't get emailed the report, so unfortunately I didn't include it in there, but I, I did, um, Mr. Bragno did forward it to me, so, um, I don't know if you want to put it in next month's, the report that he had with it, so, um. Public Works, okay, drumroll, we hired a superintendent, yay, 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 yay. Um, he is starting, uh, on the twenty-first, we, uh, we have stolen him from the county, which is awesome, again. Former Public Works Superintendent Will Liddall, he, um, he really kind of pushed, uh, his name's Ryan, Ryan Baxter, he works, he's a building inspector for the county right now. Um, he has talked to Ryan several times in the last couple of months and really convinced him that, um, he should apply and that he felt like he could do really well. He's young, he would grow into the role, um, we actually hired him as, uh, in, in training, because we're going to have to get him some training, but he's got, um, he's got good base skills, he gets along well with people, we interviewed him, gosh, like three or four different times, actually, he interviewed us. He came and asked us a bunch of questions, he met with Ron twice now, where he spent part of the day with Ron to see how things went. Um, and so we're just, we're really happy, so he's going to be starting this, later this month, and then, um, he actually, we had a crew position that was open since last summer that we hadn't, we hadn't advertised it yet because we weren't really sure what we were doing with Will's position, we kind of wanted to see how that was going to go, well, he actually told us about another gentleman at the county and told him that he should come over as well, and so, um, uh, Trevor Osberg is going to be starting, actually this week, I think, right? Tomorrow, so, um, we talked to him two weeks ago, and Ryan was the one that actually recommended him, so, um, so we will have a full crew at the end of the month, yay! Um, so we're really excited about that, so, um, nothing major in the front office, other than poor Anthony is learning how to do everything. So, um, and then the, the SARS COVID-2 data, the wastewater data, I enjoy reading that because I'm a geek on stuff like that. I don't like cooties, so I want to know where there's cooties, and we do have cooties. So, um, I did put in my, my last CA report, um, I don't want to, I wrote, I wrote it, so if you read it, great, if you didn't, oh, well. But, yeah, so this is my, going to be my last, uh, regular council meeting. I did a, a quick thing today to figure out how many public meetings I've, I've attended, and it's, uh, conservatively, it's over two hundred, so, I'm done.
Does that include when you were at the funding in the county? Because those were like until two in the morning.
Yeah.
Ours, watching.
That was, the worst meeting I ever had was a planning commission meeting that went till two AM, and that was just stupid because after ten o'clock, everybody was just done, so. But that was the absolute worst.
We never made it that. Uh, okay, uh, council comments, starting with Council Bradley.
Don't have too many comments, I did have a question I forgot to ask Mr. Bragno in regard to the email with the, with the test, next month with the time, with the staff hours, you, just because it wasn't covered in there, you have a plan for Friday if we have an emergency with Public Works, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's all, it wasn't addressed in there, because I've had to use them up before having them come shut off water when, when I get an order and there's water where it's not supposed to be.
Oh, non-emergency dispatcher, public, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
So it would just be like any normal call out.
Yeah, but I just wanted to make, since it wasn't, and I just wanted to make sure.
No, we're going to make you wait till Monday.
I'll break this one. The last time I talked to Chief Greer, it sounds like everything's still in the hands of the smaller boards, that everything's slow moving. And then there's my public, my, my community evolving, uh, baseball's coming, and Little League asked me to quit on hiring a coach again, so. Which leads to another one of the assistants of council knows I am friends with Mr. Baxter outside of, outside of. outside of, outside of work, because he also asked me to coach paper. There should, I already disclosed to the administrator they don't see any chance of any conflict of interest, but just so everybody knows, Mr. Baxter and I are friends outside of, outside of our city hats.
Okay, Counsel Martinez.
I want to congratulate you on the hires. I know Mr. Baxter, and I don't remember his last name, but I know Trevor as well.
Baxter is his last name.
Trevor, Ryan Baxter.
Osborne.
Osberg, Mr. Trevor Osberg. I had the pleasure of making his acquaintance over the summer. Congratulations, that's great, that's great for our city. Thank you, Jody, for your service, since I've been involved, you've been very helpful. And thank you, thank you for, thank you for working so hard for us. This week will be the final two home games for the basketball teams here at Gold Beach, at the Gold Beach High School. So if you have a chance, come down on Tuesday night, tomorrow night. And, and Friday night will be the final home game of the league schedule. However, our boys varsity team is ranked in the top ten in the state, made the top five, I don't know.
They made the top five.
They made the top five, so they're a real ball to watch, pun intended. And, come support them, they work really hard.
And their coaches.
That's right, and their teachers. No, it's, it's, it's a fun time, and I'm proud to, proud to be associated with it.
Their Friday night game looks to be lining up to be for the league championship on the boys' side.
Okay, yeah, yeah, and, yeah, I'm proud of all the players, the games of league start at four thirty, that could be, there's always three games, JV Boys, Girls Varsity, and then Boys Varsity. There you have it.
Thank you. Counselor Carron.
I just bought Jeremy's Letterman jacket, so I could come support from Jeremy's Letterman jacket, that'd be pretty nice. My two things, three things. One, I have been helping connect people in the community to a project that the Grants Pass Family YNCA and All Care are working on together to look at, and this was the word crisis problem situation challenge around childcare. And finding childcare, doesn't matter how old, infant to school age, and so there's a big town hall in Brookings sponsored by All Care and the Grants Pass Family YNCA, exploring options, All Care asked, looking at what's out there, what can you guys as a YNCA maybe do? And I invited them to come up to Gold Beach on Wednesday morning, so there's a small group, so if you know of anybody who might be interested, or if anybody in this room is interested in sitting in on that meeting with All Care and the YNCA to talk about our childcare needs around goals number, however many of these that halls enter, a lot of them, let me know, so it's Wednesday morning at nine. And then the other exciting news is, I'm like, oh yeah, I could totally do that. The reappearing Curry Health Assessment is out. So we have a awesome survey that all of those in Curry County are being asked to participate. The Oregon Health Authority likes to get a picture of what's going on with our healthcare and with the social determinants of health and everything around health. So I got to be a Gold Beach voice on that, because the mayor was not able to do that. It's been quite interesting, and I have the flyer with the QR code. I have not taken my own survey yet, there's those estimated thirty minutes, but I'm thinking it's probably twenty. And, there are, it's for people sixteen years and older, I guess I could just read the flyer, that would be better. Do you live or work in Curry County? We need your help making Curry County a healthier place to live, work, learn, play. Share what's important to you. People sixteen years and older who live or work in Curry County can share what's important to their health. By taking this thirty-minute questionnaire, you can help make Curry County an even better place to live. All persons who complete the questionnaire can enter to win one of ten one hundred dollar Visa gift cards. And the contact information is on there, this just happens every five years, and I'm all about data and information helping our city, so I will give you each one of these and please share with people.
We'll put one out in the hallway if there's one out in the hallway.
And if you win a hundred dollar Visa gift card, please share it with me.
But only fifty dollars.
Okay, half, sweet, I wasn't going to go for half, all right, thank you. So I'll pass that, and then I just have to end, thank you, Jody, thank you for making me learn a lot and helping me do this, it's been, I very much enjoyed it, and I'm going to enjoy having fun with you. And not having to ask you, so on the budget line for that.
Those are yours.
Okay. Well, you need to talk about the housing summit piece.
I know. Oh, and I did talk about legal cities, oh, maybe I, I told you.
It feels like you're all over there, so.
I know, I did talk about that one thing.
So I'll leave it for the mayor anyways, because chill out a better rendition of it. I was approached by a gentleman that was looking for folks that wanted to participate with him in, and looking at some home revitalization for citizens in City Eagle Beach, and that was like two, three days before the housing summit happened. Walk in the front door there, and the first gentleman I talked to spent about thirty minutes, because he runs a nonprofit that does exactly that. It must have been faded, I have no idea, but I'm hoping that we're going to be able to look at that, I spoke with him again today and said, you know, bigger and better, getting these folks on the idea of converting their home space into duplexes when they're already having a harder time staying there and things like that. That might be a good return on that investment, so hopeful for that. Outside of that, my main community interactions are things like the fire department, so Facebook gets to that before I'll ever have the chance to talk about it, and certain things I just can't talk about anyways, so I will just leave that to the wayside. And the final thing is, I spent some time in town, in the job scope, whatever, spent a year, two years now, two years? And, and they were, right after the fires, they were taking on the task of redoing their zoning code while having interim all of their community development up to their city manager. And so while it is difficult where we have staff turnover occurring, seeing them be resilient like that and taking on, not just making sure things keep running, but, but striving to go further, I have the utmost confidence that that's what we're going to be able to do here. So thank you, Jody, but hopefully we will still succeed.
Thank you. I have to admit, it was like probably the busiest month I've had since I've been the mayor. I can't believe how many meetings I've had, too, I mean, they always do a lot, but this, I actually wrote it down on my calendar. You know, we started the month off of January third at our council meeting, and on the fourth, I attended a Zoom meeting with the Governor Alex's team on housing and homelessness, which obviously didn't work because she cut out all rural communities from any help a few days later. But I did get some good information from the chief to pass along. On the sixth, Deputy Administrator Pagano and I had a Zoom with Matt from the Housing Authority, I looked up possibly doing the project in Eagle Beach. And from the tenth to the twelfth, we had the slide issue, and I learned how to get in the way when I was just trying to be informed, and I attended three meetings, and then I ducked out for any future confusion. My lesson on that is that we need to get our backs under our, on how to coordinate with the county on emergencies, and I believe that's on both sides. So the biggest thing was because I was there, they thought it was important to me, part of the plan. I just wanted to know, because people expect me to know things. But thankfully, ODAT did an amazing job, and the road was opened pretty quickly. On the seventeenth, Deputy Administrator Pagano and I attended an ad hoc meeting with the county and the hospital, discussed possible solutions for housing. A developer had identified several properties in South County that might work for a project. On the eighteenth, we had the pre-city day at the Capitol meeting on Zoom. On the nineteenth, Administrator Fritz and I did the agenda planning meeting. On the twenty-fifth, I attended the city day at the Capitol with Counselor Skinner, I toured a micro-village, which is kind of an urban campground near the Capitol. It was really interesting, because they built it completely portable, so the fencing isn't in the ground, it's just on the ground, the units are all portable, they don't like the pallet shelters that much there, they have a place in West Salem, Lindell Zone. And they had community partners purchase almost everything there. So one of the churches bought one of the units, one of the patrons bought one of the units, some of the, everybody bought something there, and so there was a lot of community buy-in. They're doing double occupancy, so there's eighty people there, and this was just for adults, and it was brand new, they don't expect it to be more than two years, because they're only leasing it for that long. And like what we saw at Old Bay Village, almost everybody there in the adult population had some sort of walker, or wheelchair, or cane, and mobility issues, it was really quite surprising. Now, they also, on Portland Road, have a family unit, which I did not get to go see, but it was, it was interesting to see, they like to call it a micro-village rather than an urban campground, I think it has a better public connotation to it.
Yeah, I don't like the campground either.
I knew that. They have a larger population than, of course, we do, but they, they've only lost a hundred people that have been asked to leave and not return. Of the eight hundred people that have gone through there, they've had several hundred that have found permanent housing or some other type of solution for them, so they, they feel like their program's been pretty successful, been doing it a while. I met with Brenda Bateman for quite a while, she's the new head of DLCD, if you haven't met her before, she has a background with this organ, so.
That could be a good thing.
Yeah, so Department of Land, DLCD is Department of Land and Conservation.
Conservation and development, David Ross.
They've often been not such a good partner historically with developing and planning, they've always been the ones that say no. But I would have to say recently, it's, it's been different, and I think Brenda is going to continue doing that, where it's going to be more friendly, because obviously we haven't, we failed on the housing side. And I believe the governor said we need thirty-six thousand new units, and so obviously planning is one of the problems. So it, it was an interesting conversation with her, I talked to her emergency management and a few others, and then Counsel Schreiber, Schreiber out of Brookings got us breakfast with our new Senator David Brock Smith, and Counsel Skinner, and I had breakfast, he gave us an hour and forty-five minutes, which was, everybody else was lucky to get fifteen minutes, which I couldn't get, because he was too busy that afternoon, but thankfully we did get to speak with him. And he, he's, he is a city guy, and he came from the city council in Porford, and then moved his way through, and so he does understand the importance of like the new Oregon cities, and he had some questions that I was able to connect him to Mike McCulley, which is the director at legal cities. On the twenty-seventh, I went to a work event on modular housing, and I was quite shocked, it was called Hacienda CDC, and they are doing a project called Mas Casita, mas meaning more in Spanish and housing per casita, but then it's also being built out of mass timber, so they consider it a double meaning. What I didn't know is that Governor Kotek, when she was the speaker, and Senator Merkley and Senator Whiting have been working on this for years, and the state threw in five million dollars, and the federal government threw in forty-one million dollars, so while we got there early, because it's in Portland and we didn't want to get lost, and all of a sudden, all the news media started showing up. And the next thing you know, Governor Kotek comes in, and then Senator Merkley, and I'm happy to report that Governor Kotek remembers me from two thousand fifteen, and she was very kind and cordial, and I posted some things on Facebook and people were kind of mad about it, but it's like, it doesn't matter when the election's over, who's elected, as elected officials, we've worked with who they gave us. The voters said, this is who you're working with, and that's who I work with. So whether that person is more progressive than I am, doesn't matter. I'm going to work with that person, I'm going to develop that relationship, so it's not about whether or not I agree with her politics, it's about our community needs stuff, and that's where we're going to get it from.
And it's good that she remembers you, because that's, it's all about the relationships.
So it was really cool, and then I had a good talk with Senator Merkley briefly, and then on the thirtieth, I attended the housing summit, after being gone a week, I really didn't do that, but I did, I did make some connections, I now have two friends at the Housing and Urban Development. Nobody wants their money, but they have it, and the reason they don't want their money is it's hard. And so, and we talked to some developers, my biggest takeaway is people don't understand the basic tenets of planning, and so if we're going to do any public outreach and education, I think that's one of the things we can talk about. Number one is, it's most efficient to build where infrastructure exists. Where is their water, where is their sewer, where is their power, where is their internet, where is their phone and cable, and where are their roads? If they don't exist there, it's not a good place to develop. And I remember having that long conversation with Administrator Fritz when they went to place the hospital up towards the mountain, it's like, you can't get anything there, including the ambulance. And then there was this constant discussion about, we should just release forestry grazing property, but forestry grazing property is not near any of those services, so it doesn't make sense if we're going to do anything quickly, to even worry about that piece. And so my takeaway over a whole month was that we need to focus on the City Eagle Beach housing problem and try to come up with our own solutions, and if we get our first project going, then we can share it with other people and be more partner-driven, but right now, our partners that would be potential tend to be still focused on that, we need to develop on forty acres of forestry grazing, and that's just, even if you could get it approved through the state, which I've been told would take ten or fifteen years, it, it doesn't have the other services. You can, Brad Bateman's here talking, you know, about people living in the sticks not having internet, well, that's because they live in the sticks, they're lucky to have electricity. I used to live in the sticks, grew up in the sticks. I had a really good joke about that, so for those of you that understand infrastructure, I lived up at Libby Creek, and the power was going a lot, and my mom called Kew's Curry and said, I'm tired of my power going out, what can you do different? I said, well, we can't help you, it's, it's on the egg this line, she goes, well, I don't want to be on the egg slide anymore, help me out, I don't like it. Physically, that's the only one that was there, I think she was thinking more like a party line on your phone, but anyway, my dad and I had a pretty good laugh about that. So, and I'm just going to finish up with, on the third, Deputy Administrator Pagano and I had a follow-up meeting with Matt from the Housing Authority and the developer, Stephen McMurtry, and they are interested in voting here, they're talking about some properties, and I think all we have to do is continue to plant the seed and be positive, I don't know that we're actually going to have to do anything to make that happen. So I, do you agree with that, they're kind of on their way?
Yep.
And, but having a few meetings with them has helped. On February fourth, I got the carpool with Counsel Madison to Senator Merkley's town hall, who also was there with Senator David Brock Smith and our, our own court vice who's going to be our state representative. And so it was a pretty good meeting, I was surprised at the number of people there, it wasn't really big, and unfortunately, they had to bring some important kid from Kew's Bay to be security, he was a state trooper, he was the only one there. But everybody was really nice to him, I really liked that, everybody thanked him for being there, thanked him for his service, it was pretty impressive. And Senator Merkley's kind of a different guy, he, because he grew up, I think, in Myrtle Creek or somewhere over in the Rockford area, he really understands rural, and he understands wood, and he understands fish, and so he's a different, different kind of person, I think, when it comes to talking about our issues, there wasn't one issue he didn't understand, it was quite surprising. I was appointed to fill the open seat for the Oregon Mayors Association, and so I have to go to six meetings a year, well, maybe case with our part of that travel, and so it won't cost the city anything, but most of the meetings are things I go to anyway. So.
Congratulations.
And I have spent almost all of my training budget and travel budget, so I'll be paying out of pocket for most of the rest of the year. Next year, give me more.
I wrote that down. Down right there.
I actually never understood why the mayor was separate, but.
I don't either.
Former mayor overspent, and I always got. Former mayor overspent, and I always got on and go back with it as a council, so I'm not doing that.
Well, as long as, as long as we have money and the other relying on them, it's okay.
Yeah, I got a reputation to keep. Is there anything else? Did you want to say anything about the New Orleans City Day at the Capitol?
Oh, I will just do a plug for Lake of Oregon Cities in general. Like, they're amazing. Like, one of their lawyers accidentally talked to me because she thought I was someone else, and she gave me such, I'm like, oh, actually, you were supposed to talk to me, so now I have some really good information for something I've been thinking about a lot. The chance to talk with, it's just, it's a really good format where you're able to that day at the Capitol in particular, because you have information sessions in the morning, and then you go to the Capitol and meet with people. So I used my professional Mary Kay consultant skills to go over to the Capitol building where we did not have employment with Senator Smith, and just wait in the hall writing a card to bring to his new office until he walked by and saw me, so then we visited for a while. And then we had a reception, and that's where we met with all the different departments. And then I was able to introduce Brenda Bateman to Senator Smith, since I had met the both of them, because Brenda went to all of the cities, all the regions, including Oregon, when she took the job as the Director of the Department of Land Conservation and Development. So she had a meeting here in Gold Beach, so barely needed to have the two of them meet. And on personal note, I met a friend of a friend who has passed, that we had the same mutual friend, so that was good to live memories. So I just think it's so important to connect with other communities, to remember the power of it, like that one page that we wrote about homelessness is because we're all united in what we're dealing with, and I think it's a really good reminder to work together, to have that. So the Lake of Oregon Cities, they're going to have their spring conference coming up in the spring.
April.
I highly recommend attending.
Seaside, not far.
Yeah, anyway, so yes, go LSC. If you have any questions, it's like what, what city Administrator Fritz, I'll say, at your name here, what, she said it's like the scripture, like you can, if you need something and you don't know about it from city council, you can go to the LSC website or call one of their people, and they will give you the information you need, your staff or elected or whatever.
Their lobbyists are very skilled, because they're not allowed to give any money, so they have to lobby for city priorities without that, so it's all about relationships.
I don't know if you were able to see the flyers after the city day, but you actually did make it in one of the pictures.
The what?
The flyer from LSC for city day.
Oh, no.
You actually did make it in one of the pictures.
There you go. I'll autograph that for you.
There was only three pictures, and you were in one of them.
There you go.
That's awesome.
All right, is there anything else? Okay, we are done at eight oh one PM.